Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. And do we have anything to report from closed session?
We do not.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Madam Secretary, can you do a roll call?
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present.
Great, thank you. And if you'd please join Commissioner Donner and the rest of us in Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next is... I'm sorry, I already lost my spot. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion or have any changes? Commissioner Dinger?
Mr. Chairman, I approve. I move that the minutes be approved as written.
Great, thank you. And a second?
A second.
Please vote. All right, perfect. That item passes. And next up is public comments. We do have one request to speak tonight for Agenda Item 3. Do we have any other people requesting to speak that aren't... That's not on the agenda?
No, we do not have additional public comments.
Which moves us on to our consent calendar, which we don't have any, which takes us to our public hearings, Item Number 2, which is tentative parcel map TPM 20-0004 and conditional use permit CUP 21-0012. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner Danny Giometti, go provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, fellow commissioners. Tonight's project is approval of a tentative parcel map and a conditional use permit located at 26371 Via Canyon and 26373 Via Canyon. It's to convert four units, which are currently under construction, into individual condominiums. So this is an aerial image of the site. As you can see, it's two parcels. It's located south of the I-5 off-ramp between PCH within the Capistrano Beach community. Prior to 2015, the site was one previously undeveloped 26,364 square foot parcel of land. In 2015, an application was approved for a tentative parcel map and a site development permit to allow the subdivision of the parcel into two conforming building sites, Parcel 1 and Parcel 2, in conjunction with the construction of two detached residential duplexes on each of the new parcels. So this is the existing conditions and the tentative parcel map that was established. So after the entitlement approval, the applicant secured building and engineering permits and began construction of the two detached duplex structures on Parcels 1 and 2, shown in green and yellow there. When the project was originally approved, the applicant decided to defer the individual ownership of the condominiums of the four... I'm sorry, of the four residential units, so that no subdivision of airspace was originally proposed. And then in 2020, the applicant submitted the subject tentative parcel map and conditional use permit application to convert the combined four units from apartments into individual condominiums. So these are some pictures of the site currently under construction, as well as the site plan that was previously approved. Each detached unit is two stories in height, and it contains three bedrooms and provides compliant parking for two vehicles and a garage. Additionally, there are uncovered... There's three uncovered parking stalls provided onsite for the shared use of the homeowners. So the applicant proposes to process the tentative parcel map and conditional use permit in order to convert these four units into condominiums and allow each unit to be sold separately. Since the development on the site has already been approved and it's underway on both parcels, both a tentative parcel map and a conditional use permit in accordance with the Dana Point zoning code standards must be processed in order to allow the units to be converted. This is the image of the condominium plan here. It illustrates on this image how the airspace will be divided into four separate areas, ranging in size for each unit. Each unit's highlighted, as well as the driveway. The driveway is shown in purple. Each of the airspace areas includes one of the dwelling units, their private decks, the attached garages, and the surrounding yard area. Maintenance of each unit's... Maintenance of each defined airspace will be the responsibility of the unit's owner. And also identified are the driveways, as I said, in purple there, and the open parking stalls, which are also defined as a common area. The project has also been conditioned to require the applicant to submit a draft of the CCNRs, the covenants, conditions, and restrictions, to be reviewed by the city for compliance with both the conditions of approval and the requirements of the subdivision map act and the city's subdivision ordinance. So this is the landscape plan and the finished material diagram here. The conversion of the dwelling units into a condominium project also requires the review and approval of a conditional use permit. Condo conversions are required to comply with the applicable development standards of the zoning district in which they're located. In the case of the subject site, the structures were designed in compliance with the development standards of the RG14 zoning district when it was originally approved. The condominiums are also required to provide high-quality urban design through architectural enhancement, landscape improvements, and construction. These items were reviewed and approved, as well, with the original entitlements. The condominium conversion must also provide improved privacy between units and individual metering systems for each unit, as well as trash collection. Since the development's currently under construction and the owner anticipated the conversion of the dwelling units for individual ownership, these requirements have been included in the approved construction documents. The landscape plan shown here was also reviewed and approved by Planning Commission back in 2015, and the landscaping will be installed towards the end of construction activities on the site. Based on the analysis of the project, as well as the project consistency with the city's general plan and zoning subdivision ordinances, staff determines that the required findings supporting the condo conversion can be made. Accordingly, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving TPM 20-0004 and CUP 21-0012. That concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Danny. Any questions for the staff? Commissioner Opel?
Hey, good evening, Danny. Thank you for that presentation. One question. Can you go back to the landscape map and show where the shared parking are? Because you said it's part of the common area, but I just couldn't figure out where that exactly was.
Yeah, let me actually show you on the site plan. I'm not sure it's shown on that landscape plan. So the parking areas... Let me see if I have a highlighter here. So here's the driveway to the first two units, with the parking area, I believe, located here. And then, over here, you have a single space here and another single space here. You know, and looking at this again, there is a third space... Oh, here it is. So there's the two spaces here, open parking. Open parking here, as well as here.
So there's four shared parking, then?
Four parked... Four shared parking. Did I say three?
Yeah. So going back to the common area, then? They're not all common area. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, the shared parking stalls, as part of the condo plan, will be... They were designated as common area initially, and they'll be designated as that in the CCNRs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gabbert?
Yeah, to follow up on Ms. Opel's comments, it looks like, when you go back to the parcel... I'm sorry, to the condo map, the open spaces are within the air envelope of the individual houses. Am I right?
Yeah, so when I highlighted these, I followed the perimeters that were provided by the condo plan.
Okay.
But the CCNRs for the units, when they're established, will show those as common open parking areas.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Donner, Vice Chair Donner?
Danny, do they have any draft CCNRs at this point?
At the moment, they do not. But it's a condition in this report that they provide them prior to the project being finalled.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, please.
Danny, can you go back to the picture you were showing where the parking was? Common area parking? Yes. What do you think is the grade on this street in the third picture from the left, going up?
The grade here?
Yeah, the grade in... If you look in the picture, the grade going up, yes.
Right in this area here?
Yes.
Well, the grade here is 10%, and here's about 12%, so I would assume it would be something in between that, between 10% and 12%. Without having the grading plan on hand, I can't tell you what it is, but that's what I would estimate.
So on the site access, is there anywhere where the grade is greater than 20%? To your knowledge?
To my knowledge, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. I have a couple of questions for you real quickly. So I just want to understand this. So we have the tentative parcel map, which is essentially an air... Just... They're just doing a condo map, right? So no lines?
Correct.
Are they literally subdividing the air?
Just subdividing the air. It's simply just an action for an air subdivision.
Great. And in that... And then you have your use permit. Would it be fair to say that if the process... So this is really a function of the delay of the subdivision from when the original project was proposed? That if we would have had a map proposed at that time, then there would be no CUP?
Correct.
Because the CUP is for the conversion, which wouldn't have... There would be no conversion?
Correct. It would just be a tentative parcel map.
And then I just assume, but I'll make sure that any of the common area is part of the HOA maintained and controlled through the CCNRs?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That was all I had. Thank you. All right, that's item 2. Do we have anybody wishing to speak on item number 2? I don't think we do. All right, so close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and a motion. Commissioner Gabbert?
Yeah. My... I'm going to go back to my days as a plan examiner. I support the project, but I am frustrated that this wasn't thought through by the applicant when they initially submitted those many years ago. And it just creates all of this additional staff time that wasn't necessary, and it could have been done all at once. And I just wish that, in the future, when applicants come in, they would think through how they're going to convey the property and take care of it all at once, so that staff doesn't have to do 50... You know, have to go through three or four different sessions to get something approved. So, yeah, I support the project, but I hope that, in the future, we can make that as clear as possible to future applicants. So, thank you.
No comments? Any other comments from fellow commissioners or a motion? Commissioner Dinger?
No comments. I concur with Commissioner Kabard on his comments. And at the same time, I'd like to move that we... That we approve the TTM TPM 20-004 and CUP 21-0012.
Great. We have a motion or a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Anybody want to discuss, or we just go to a vote? Vote, all right. I don't... I have to go back and look, but we have a motion and a second, so we can pull it back? If it's something you want to discuss, or... Sorry, my mistake. All right, so we... Good to vote? Okay. All right. Item passes 5-0. Congratulations. She moves us on to item number 3. And that's Site Development Permit SDP 21-0025, approving a 1,118 square foot accessory dwelling unit to be constructed above an existing detached garage. Do we have a staff report?
That's my presentation, if I can figure out. Oh, here we go. So this is an item for an accessory dwelling unit. And just to familiarize yourself with the location, it is located at the corner of Via California and Via Vales in the residential single-family 12 zoning district. The property is located next to some other single-family homes. To the east is a two-story structure, and to the north is a single-story structure. And then you have the I-5 freeway that's to the south. Here's a closer image. The accessory dwelling unit is proposed to be located above the existing three-car garage. And the image to the left shows an aerial that the garage is in proximity to the existing two-story structure, single-family structure to the east. And the separation of the two, there's about a closer six-foot setback that's located at that property line. The project proposes to do a two-story ADU that would encompass about... About close to 1,200 square feet in size. Two bedrooms, two baths on the upper level. And at the lower level is a conversion of the existing storage and office area. So just a little more background for the planning commission. This is the first accessory dwelling unit that the planning commission is reviewing since the city council adopted this ADU ordinance in August. So the ordinance, basically, in consistency with the state law, allows for ADUs in single-family, multifamily districts. One story, 16 feet in height, and those size limitations and setback requirements, and parking spots required if the project is located more than a half mile of transit. So what the ordinance also allows for, however, is a deviation from certain standards, with the exception of not being close to the four feet, cannot exceed 1,200 square feet, no more than two bedrooms. And so with this project for you tonight is because it does exceed the standard of size, it is requesting 1,200 square feet, and also is requesting two bedrooms. So Site Development Permit is required for that purpose. The idea is that we would conduct a public hearing, notice the property owners within 300 feet, and to ensure that the findings, which address assurance that the use is consistent with the neighborhood, can be discussed. So on to the project. Here is the site plan. It shows that the existing primary structure is oriented towards Via California. And that project is in plan check for that structure to be remodeled in addition to be conducted for a second story. So the primary structure is going to be a two-story structure, totaling about 3,000 square feet. And the ADU, that is the existing three-car garage, the three-car garage will be maintained. And the existing storage and tool shed, which is there now, will be modified to be an office. And those uses on the ground floor continue to be utilized by the primary residents. The ADU, shown here on the right, would be, again, two bedrooms and two baths, and would be entirely on the upper floor. One thing of note, as I mentioned, is the existing structure is about 5 feet 9 inches from the rear property line. The proposed development would maintain that setback at the lower level, consistent with the existing structure. But the ADU itself has been stepped back at varying distances. The bedrooms themselves are 15 feet from the rear property line, and the pantry and kitchen area, you see there, are about 9 feet. Here are the elevations. Again, you can see the garage area that's oriented towards Via Vales. And then we have the upper-story deck. And you can see how the upper levels have been set back from the rear area to be sensitive to the second-story neighbor to the right. One thing of note is that neighbor to the right actually is a through lot. So the property in that location is actually their rear yard. So just going over some of the standards, just to kind of help compare the two. So the maximum ADU height is 16 feet. With the Site Development Permit, it can go up to 27 feet, seven inches, as was proposed. The side yard setbacks and the rear setbacks of the ADU can actually go up to four feet. But this, again, exceeds that distance. In this situation, a parking space is provided in that there has a three-car garage. And the living area, in that we are maintaining just the upper level as the ADU, is no more than 1,200 square feet. I have distributed a memo to the planning commission, as well as applicant. We want to ensure the deed restriction was consistent with the ordinance and that that restriction would ensure that the ADU is consistent with our ordinance, should not be sold separately, should not be utilized as a short-term rental, and that it shall be utilized for... By the primary dwelling of the ADU after 2025. More importantly, though, is we recognize that this design, at the lower level, the office in itself, is to ensure that it's not going to be utilized for the ADU, we have created a condition that the ADU should not exceed 1,200 square feet, no more than two bedrooms in size, at no point till the office and storage area be rented or utilized in association with the ADU. Again, the intent of the property owners that those lower-level uses shall be used by the primary structure, primary residents, as it is today. And lastly, we want to ensure the layout of the floor plan recognizes that limitation in the lower area. So we have created a condition that requiring a building plan check that the access to the office should only be made from the exterior, and that the office shall include only a half-bath, and interior access, as shown currently, from the foyer, shall be removed. So again, ensuring that that office space is entirely separate from the ADU. So with that, staff feels that the findings can be made in support of the project. Again, focusing on the fact that the use is consistent with the neighborhood, the structure has been set back from the neighbor's property in a way that maintains the compatibility of the design, and it meets all the development standards related to parking and height and setbacks. So with that, I'm available for questions, as well as applicant is here. If you have any questions of them.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions for staff? Just around the horn. Commissioner Gabbert?
We're defining half-bath as no shower, correct?
That is correct.
And that's in the code, or how are we making sure that...
We could specify, certainly, that would be a toilet and a sink.
Okay. Only. Toilet and a sink only.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Donner?
Just one question. You said the main residence was under plan check now? And what was the size?
The total proposed size is just under 3,000 square feet.
Okay. When I was looking at the regulations, it said it can't be more than 50% of the primary dwelling. And the original plans showed a lot less than 3,000 square feet. So that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay, great. I think I do have a couple of quick questions here. So I just want to understand the process. So the process is, if the applicant had come in under our new ordinance with 1,000 square feet or less on a first floor, the back half of the lot, no more than 16 feet, then it's across the counter, no discretion?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're talking the big... The two components that bring the project to a Site Development Permit requirement is an additional 200 square feet, or maximum of another 200 square feet, and that addition of it on top of an existing garage, or even new garage, for that matter. Is that...
That's correct. The height and the number and the size.
Okay, perfect. All right, I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. I know the applicant is here. I don't know if this is the applicant or not. No, okay. So I'm going to invite the applicant to come up first, and then we'll call everybody else afterwards. That one over there.
Yeah, this is a project we've been working on. I'm an architect. It's our house. And we've been working on it for over two years now, trying to get this through. We've made a lot of compromises, a lot of changes. I've tried to be sensitive to the neighbors. You know, I do this for a living. And we really wanted to keep our three-car garage because there's parking from our neighbors out in the street, and it's kind of dangerous. We've had cars come around the corner and hit. So we were like, let's try to keep the garage. So that was the whole point of keeping the three-car garage. And we're trying to... The reason we started this project was to actually get housing for my daughter and grandkids. That was the whole point. And then it kind of ballooned because it was like, oh, to get that, you've got to have a two-story house. It's like, oh, okay. So then I had to redesign the house to make it a two-story. And we got it approved. It's ready to pull permits. I mean, it's just... I even paid the school fees already. So we're ready to go, but I need to keep working. So I need to build the ADU first, so I can move into that. And then I can then do my house. And then when the house is done, I can move that, and we can move my kids and grandkids in. So that's sort of the timeline. So anyway, we've tried to be sensitive to our neighbors. Originally, I tried to have the whole second floor basically 15 feet back from the rear property line. And it was just tough trying to keep the three-car garage and not lose what's by code a three-car garage and get a stairs to the upper floor. So it necessitated having an element that went out further than 15 feet, which I'm not happy with. And I spoke with the neighbors this evening. I didn't know... I got kind of a late notice, and so I hadn't really had time to talk with them. I was able to go see their house. I could see their concerns. So even if it is approved, I'm going to try to make some adjustments with the stairs and see if I can pull that back even further from the property line. But I have to make adjustments anyway, since I have to turn the downstairs office to an outside access and get rid of the shower. So anyway, we've had a long, arduous process. I want to say thank you to Brenda. She's worked diligently with me, trying to get this, you know, changed, so I can hopefully move forward with it. So with that, like I said, my daughter's here. If she wants to speak, what she's trying to get at this. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Next up, we've got Amy Liaz... Liazze? Lindsay, sorry. Amy Lindsay.
I actually don't live directly next to the property. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Phil Duke, who does live next door. But he wasn't able to be here because he's out of town helping offspring with flood damage in the Pacific Northwest. And the main questions he had was he... It was not clear from the notification exactly how big the dwelling was going to be. I don't think anybody realized it was going to be 27 feet high. Is that correct? The accessory dwelling unit, the total height on the...
It'll be the height of the proposed...
27 feet high.
Surrounding, yeah.
Yeah, so his concerns, obviously, he submitted a letter to you guys, which I don't think I need to read out loud here, because you have it in writing. But his concerns mostly was that it's... And also, I don't think he was aware that it was also going to be... That the primary dwelling was also going to brought up to two floors. So his concern is that that would make his property somewhat cave-like by blocking airflow and stuff like that. So that's the concern. He was a little bit... He would have liked to have seen some stakes put up so he'd get a better feel for exactly the impact on his property. But so, I just was there to share those concerns. Obviously, that would be a very big change in that corner of the neighborhood.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you.
All right, I think that was it for speakers. So close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and direction. Okay, if you could do me a favor, fill out a speaker card, hand it in to Allison and you can come on up and? You could do it afterwards. That's fine. Yeah. Yeah, you can fill it out afterwards. Just make sure you give it to her because we can keep a record of your testimony.
So we're the neighbors directly to the east there that are most affected probably by the build. We have good relationship, good evening first of all. We have good relationship with all our neighbors. So we're not here because we want to disturb those relationships, but we feel like we need to voice our concerns as well because the property does affect us. Our, that end of the house is where our master bedroom is and bathroom and another room as well along that hallway. All of those views would be affected by the building.
And light.
And then the light factor, my wife is affected by light. Our house is already somewhat dark, the way it's built and so forth. And where her kitchen is also faces the house. And so adding another story up there would completely darken that much more any light that she gets within the kitchen or the downstairs. Those are our main concerns. I know he's?
So very close.
We've had good conversations. I know, you know, I know he doesn't have our demise in mind. It's just that we need to voice our concerns about, you know, how it affects our situation.
Yeah, so we're learning about the height being 27 feet, which we didn't see in the letter. As well as the closeness, which our neighbor did say he would try to move the stairwell if he could, but that's, right now, the plan is flush with the wall of the garage, which is just putting us in a hole. I mean, there will be no light on that whole side of the house. And I understand he's trying to work with that. So for the exceptions to the rules being asked for, I just asked that we would consider, you know, the neighbors as far as if things are being discussed that are outside of code. And, you know, laws are in place for a reason. I just asked that that would be really looked at from our point of view as well. And again, we've lived there for 10 years and have had no problems with our neighbors. We have a wonderful neighborhood, but we feel it's right. Been given the opportunity to come and voice our concerns in this already dark, you know, situation. So thank you for your consideration.
Great, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Very great. And I believe Commissioner Dingra, you had a question for the applicant?
Yes.
You'll see that I don't block his view in any way, shape or form. And the neighbor that spoke second, I understand their concerns. I was in their house for the first time today. They're kind of in a hole. Their lot's like four feet below ours and there's a five-foot fence. So they're kind of buried down there, which I didn't realize. So I told them I can cut the roof and we're hanging back. It's closest to property to a flush. That'd open up three feet. And then I'm going to attempt to try to move the stairs back even further to give them. So basically, we'd have like 20 feet. Also, on my second floor, I didn't put, the windows I had were obscured. I was trying to, you know, concern privacy so that we weren't blocking. They had privacy between the two homes. So I've attempted as much as I can. Okay.
Thank you for the pictures. I have two questions.
Yes.
First question is, you heard from two of your neighbors here and we have some correspondence on file. All of them are concerned about the height and they want to see something in what is known in the industry as story polling, essentially, you know. Would you be willing to do something like this for your neighbors? In other words, so that they have an idea by putting a story poll, so to speak. I'm sure being an architect, you understand where I'm going with that.
Absolutely. I've had to do that for a lot of projects I've done in Laguna Beach.
Okay. So my first question is, would you be willing to do that for your neighbors so they have a good grasp of how high, how high the 27 foot, seven inches is going to be from the ground level as depicted on the plans?
I could. I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure they're concerned because the ridge is at 27 feet. The actual plate line that would concern them is, it's a regular plate line. And so I'm not sure that would help. The only thing the story polls might help them see is kind of the line of the roof that might throw some shadow onto their property. So I'd be willing to do that to help. I tried to today, but I don't have a, so I put a?
No, I understand. It's just a question. I want to know if you're willing to do that for your neighbors.
I'm trying to be good to them. I mean, you know, nice because they're good neighbors.
Understood.
And I don't want to impact them either, so.
Yeah, understood. In the interest of time, I'll be brief. Are these conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
As outlined the three conditions relative to the deed restriction and, you know, the storage area restriction and the office building as well as half a bath?
Yes, no, it's quite, quite, in fact, I was thinking about changing it to that anyway, so it's fine.
Okay.
And even if it's approved tonight, I will put up the story polls regardless because, you know, I, you know, I want, like I said, I'm trying to be a good neighbor to them too. They're, you know, they've been great neighbors and I don't want to impact them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible motion. Anybody want to begin? Commissioner Gabbert?
I'm in support of the project. I think that, you know, it's our first one. So there's been bumps along the road, but I think that it's, it's in keeping with what ADUs are supposed to be. I mean, in this case, he's trying to take care of his family, so I appreciate that. The concerns about sunlight are, I understand. But when I looked at the footprint of the existing garage and its relative, or its relative position to the, to the structure to the east, it only takes up about 14, 13 feet of that entire house. So I'm comfortable with that as well. So with that, I support the project.
Anybody have other comments? Anybody? Commissioner Dingra?
No, I don't have any further comments. I'm glad that the applicant is willing to work with his neighbor. At least he's shown the volition here and I have no doubt that he'd be able to do that. So I believe we can move forward with this.
Great. Commissioner Vice Chair Donner, any comments or?
Yeah, I'd just like to also compliment Mr. Collins on his ability to include and consider his neighbors. I know he's trying to accomplish something and he's willing to be flexible to do that. And I appreciate it and I support the project.
Great. So I just, you know, I'm generally supportive. I think it's important to, for me at least, to talk through the rationale behind why I support this as opposed to what else could potentially happen here. Because I think there are other options for this property owner that haven't been considered. Rightly so, because that's not why they're here tonight. But, you know, as we look at these applications, as I think staff discussed, these ADUs are mandated and the only difference in our city is that there's an additional challenge or an additional process that you can go through to get 200 extra square feet and put the unit over a garage as opposed to utilizing the garage. Because the way the ordinance or the legislation came down, you could use your garage in some cases as a ADU and we lose parking. And in a community like ours, parking has become quite a luxurious thing to have. And so we have to consider all those. When I look, and so on its face, that makes some sense. But then when you look at the underlying zoning district that this property's on as well as the lot orientation, and it's got dual frontage, it's kind of a double whammy. He's got a large lot with a detached garage in the back that is set off what would be a side yard if there was a, if the frontage was off of the garage side, that would actually be a four-foot side yard minimum requirement. And because this RSF 12, they could subdivide the property and have a separate lot with a home that would run front to back and take up the entire lot almost. And so I think when you look at what could be done versus what's being done, this seems appropriate to me. I do think it's appropriate that we incorporate any motion tonight to move forward with the additional corrections on this from staff. That was item 27, 28, and 33, I believe.
Chair, there was an additional correction. It should be 39, 40, and 41.
Okay, 39, 40, 41. But other than that, I am in support. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with his neighbors. Hopefully, he can accommodate or address some of their concerns. I mean, these are not concerns that are new here. I think we hear this almost any time there's a new project. And when you have a rear lot adjoining a side yard with a detached garage, I mean, it gets very complicated very quickly. And I think making the best of the situation, I can appreciate that from the applicant's point of view as well. So with that, I'm in full support.
Chair, I move that site development permit SDP 21-0025 approved, approving a 1,118 square foot accessory dwelling unit be constructed above an existing detached garage.
Second, would you, would you amend your motion to include the changes?
Yeah, I amend the motion to include new conditions 39, 40, and 41 as?
Commissioner Gabbert, it's actually, you're, the memos, you have two memos in front of you. Item, one labeled item number three is the one that's related to this application. So it's related to conditions 27, 28, and 33.
Okay, my mistake. So conditions 27, 28, and 33.
And will you accept that? Okay, second? All right, go ahead and vote. If that item passes, congratulations. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number four, and that is site development permit SDP 21-0023, approving a two-story detached 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit with a roof deck in conjunction with a single-family dwelling unit. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner Danny Jimetti, who provide a staff report, please.
Good evening again, Chair Nelson, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening is a request to permit a two-story detached 1,200 square foot accessory dwelling unit with a roof deck in conjunction with a single-family dwelling. So the site is a vacant 5,000 square foot lot. It has frontage on both Seville Place and Ruby Lantern. The lot gradually slopes down from Seville Place to Ruby Lantern. It's also located east of Golden Lantern between La Cresta Drive and Pacific Coast Highway within the Lantern Village. And it's zoned as multifamily 14, RMF 14, which allows for multiple units to be developed on a lot based on land area. It's surrounded by a mixture of multiple-family duplex, single-family development with structures ranging anywhere from one to four stories. And on October 14th, 2019, the Director of Community Development approved a minor site development permit for a 191 square foot roof deck above the proposed accessory dwelling unit in conjunction with the development of a single-family dwelling on the vacant lot. Soon after, the necessary construction documents were submitted to the city's Building and Safety Department for review and approval, and they're currently in plan check. So while under plan review, the city council approved the new ordinance to modify the Dana Point zoning code related to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, as we talked about in the past presentation. And pursuant to ordinance number 21-06, section 907-210 of the Dana Point zoning code was repealed and replaced in its entirety with the new accessory dwelling unit regulations, which invalidated the subject ADU as previously approved. More specifically, the new ordinance states that the maximum building height of a detached ADU is limited to 16 feet. The maximum floor area shall not exceed 1,000 square feet. No more than one bedroom shall be allowed and no roof decks shall be allowed to be constructed above an ADU. Alternatively, section H of the new ADU ordinance shown here allows the applicant to develop the ADU as designed with the approval of the subject site development permit. Because the applicant's maintaining the ADU as previously approved via the original site development permit, the approval of a site development permit is required. So this is the site plan. As you can see, the single-family dwelling is on the left or the north and the proposed ADU is to the right on the south. The single-family dwelling is a 2,181 square foot home. It's a, it has four beds, four baths, and an attached two-car garage. It's two stories in height and it's set back 15 feet with a driveway located upslope confronting Seville Place. The ADU on the right-hand side of the southern side is proposed at 1,193 square feet. It has two bedrooms with an adjoining, with adjoining bathrooms and there's one office with an adjoining, one office downstairs and and a, and a, I'm sorry, an office with an adjoining bath downstairs. And then the ADU also has a two-car garage and a roof deck. It's also two stories in height and it's set back 20 feet via the proposed driveway along Ruby Lantern. Both the single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit maintain 10-foot separation between the two structures and that creates a shared or common open space area. So this is the single-family dwelling's first and second floor floor plans. The first floor of the single-family dwelling has a main entry with an attached two-car garage. The downstairs rooms include two bedrooms with en suite bathrooms and closets with, with en suite bathrooms and closets and a laundry room, a separate laundry room. Access is taken from a second, the access to the second floor is taken via a staircase in the entry hall as well as a staircase on the outside in front of the unit to the upstairs deck. The second floor includes a kitchen and the main living areas with an upper-level deck, as I stated, confronting Seville Place with the exterior stairs that go down to the first level and a balcony fronting the, or fronting the ADU between the two, between the two structures. It also contains two additional bedrooms with en suite bathrooms and closets upstairs. This is the floor plan for the first and second floor of the ADU as well as the proposed roof deck. The first floor of the ADU contains a laundry room and a two-car garage located off the entry hallway. There's also an office with an adjoining bathroom and storage area proposed. The second floor has a, has a combined kitchen and great room area that provides access to two sleeping rooms as well as a balcony. The sleeping areas include two bedrooms with both en suite bathrooms and closets and the smaller bedroom shares the bathroom access with the great room and kitchen, kind of like a shared half-bath, a full bath, but has access from the living area. And then on the roof, ADU also includes 191 square foot roof deck, which is accessible from the second floor. That's the deck that was previously approved as part of this project with the original site development permit back in 2019. So these are the elevations of both the ADU and the single-family dwelling as well as some section threes here. The total height of the single-family dwelling, which is located upslope along Seville Place, is 26 feet from the finished pad to the top of the highest ridge. And then the ADU downslope has a total height of 26 feet and that's from the finished pad to the top of the pitched roof ridge and then 23 feet to the top of the flat roof where the roof deck parapet extends. So that's a flat portion. This is the compliance with the RMF 14 and ADU development standards. The highlighted ADU standards are outlined below. As you can see here, the ADU maximum living area is 1,200 square feet and that's allowable through the subject site development permit. The ADU roof deck is allowed with an SDP and that's what we're doing here. ADU height limit may exceed 16 feet with a site development permit. They are proposing 26 feet. And then the ADU number of bedrooms, they can exceed one bedroom with a site development permit. So they're proposing two bedrooms and an office located downstairs. Additionally, we've provided a memorandum similar to the last project that revises two conditions that are in the resolution, the draft resolution that you see before you, as well as adds an additional condition. Condition number 39 reworks it so that the ADU is subject to the requirements of of the new ordinance, section 907. And then the ADU shall not be sold separately from the primary dwelling unit. And C, the ADU shall not be rented for less than 30 days. And then D, beginning January 1st, 2025, a natural person with legal or equitable title to the lot must reside in either the primary dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit as the person's legal domicile and permanent residence. And then E, the deed restriction runs with the land and each provision therein may be enforced against future owners of the property. Condition number 40 to be revised as follows. The ADU shall be approved as designed with no more than 1,200 square feet and two bedrooms upstairs and one office downstairs. At no point shall the office with the adjoining storage area be converted into a bedroom and adjoining closet. and adjoining closet and/or be rented as a separate unit. And then we've added an additional condition to the project that states prior to the building plan check submittal, or this is currently in plan check submittal, so it would apply, access to the first-level office shall be modified to be taken from the exterior. The office shall include only a half-bath, toilet, and sink, and interior access from the proposed foyer shall be removed. So this concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. Unfortunately, the applicant could not be here tonight. But if you have any questions, I will be able to answer on his behalf.
Great, thank you, Danny. Questions for staff? Commissioner Gabbard?
Danny, can you talk a little bit about the retaining wall and how we got to where we are?
Yeah, I actually brought the grading plan, so you can see it right here. So the... There is a retaining wall, property line wall, divisor wall that runs along the northern side yard property line to form at-grade staircase as you enter through the Ruby Lantern side, as well as the Seville side. That retaining wall, on the elevation sheet, it's kind of misleading. It shows a retaining wall that is eight feet, seven inches in height. In looking at this grading plan and confirming, it's hard to see without zooming in, but that wall at the highest point of the daylighted portion is actually only five feet, one inch. And that portion, I'll get this laser pointer up here, that portion would be located right here, facing the garage directly. So although on the elevation sheets that you have before you, there is a wall that shows as eight feet, seven inches, the daylighted portion is only five feet, one inch. Within our zoning code, a site development permit is required if the wall exceeds... Retaining wall exceeds 72 inches and is visible from the public right-of-way. This particular wall faces the wall of the garage directly and is only five feet, one inches in height. So therefore, a site development permit is not required.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Danny, the table that you showed comparing the compliance, this table, basically mentions ADU roof deck, yes, with SDP. Is there specific language in the ordinance that states that?
Correct, yeah. So the zoning code has always required that a site development permit be processed for roof decks on residential structures and that they meet certain provisions that are outlined for roof decks, one of which is that they cannot be larger than 300 square feet or 25% of the floor area directly below the roof deck. An additional condition is that it is integrated into the roof system so that it looks like it is basically just the roof, so that it either be sunken in or provided with parapet walls so that it's not visible from all sides of the structure or the grade below. This project originally demonstrated compliance with those requirements when we processed the original site development permit, which is why the project initially needed the site development permit. And they have not changed the design. It's still designed the exact same way, and that portion of the code has not changed. The only thing that's changed is the site development permit now is required for a roof deck above an ADU.
Thank you for the clarification.
Great. Any other questions? Commissioner Opel?
I have a question with respect to the revision to condition number 40. The verbiage is a little bit different than what we did for item number three. So would staff be amenable to changing the verbiage on condition number 40 to match condition number 28 on item three? I think it was clearer in the previous item.
One difference between the Ruby Lantern application is that the lower-level office in this case is intended to be utilized by the ADU. And that's why the language is slightly different.
Okay, thank you.
Danny, just to make sure I understand this. So the Via California was the square footage of the entire unit. If you counted, the office would have exceeded the 1,200. And in this case, if you include the office, you still... You don't exceed the 1,200. The issue here is whether it's a two- or three-bedroom. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. Does that help clarify?
So I guess the question is then, why did we add 41 to have the additional condition to add an exterior door?
It was potentially thought that having an exterior door would then also inhibit the use of it as a bedroom because it would potentially limit privacy.
Okay. I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay, no further questions. We don't have any speakers tonight, correct? And the applicant's not here, so we'll open and close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion. I'll go ahead and lead off. I have a couple things that I wish the applicant was here to discuss and talked to Danny about this. But if you look at... There are really several items. One is, and we talked a little bit about it tonight, is an office versus a bedroom. I think the condition modifications that have been proposed should address that, generally speaking. And I don't want to steal your thunder relative to the third bedroom, but I know that at one point, this was advertised as a three-bedroom ADU, which is concerning relative to the fact that we have pretty clear guidelines about that. The roof deck is not a concern, I think, in any... Regardless of, you know, whether it's on the main structure or the ADU. This is the type of zoning district that I believe they fit well in, in the multifamily. So I don't have any concerns, especially with the way that it's designed. I have several of those in my neighborhood, and one, two doors down, and it's not impactful. But I do, you know, a couple of things I do have some concerns with. And the first one is on the primary structure. And if you look at their floor plans, they have a secondary access to the second floor, or a primary access to the second floor as well as an access to the first floor. And I, you know, the applicant's not here, so I'd like to, you know, it'd be great if they were here, give them the opportunity to respond, but since they're not here, I'll just bring it up. I have a concern with the way this entry leads into what could be a kitchen. Shows on here is a laundry, but it is a very large laundry with uppers and lowers. And I could see this easily could be converted into a flat if you look at the way that it's designed. I couldn't come up with a functional reason for having the secondary entry point upstairs. The distance from Ruby Lantern to the back entry is less. The distance from the front door off the rear street there off of Seville is obviously right there, and you can just go up the stairs to your second floor. So I really would like to understand why that's in there. Or at a minimum, if there's a majority to move this tonight, I would request that there is a condition to remove that secondary access to the second floor. They can have a balcony if they want it, but I don't see why a staircase is needed. We've addressed the other issue relative to the bedroom and the office. So those are kind of my concerns. I'd be wide open to continuing this to have the applicant be in attendance if my fellow commissioners see that, or if you want to move it. I would only request that we had that condition, or those additional conditions.
I think it would be best if this was discussed with the applicant rather than impose a condition. At least, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, I concur. We need to get an answer on why they have this external staircase. So I support it, too, just tabling this until we can get them back in the room.
Okay, then I'll make a motion. We continue this item until a further date, or do we want to set a date?
We need to set a specific date and time, and then just let the record reflect that the public hearing is going to remain open.
Do you have a date and time you think is appropriate?
The next planning commission meeting of December 13, is it? It would be appropriate.
Okay, great. So I'd make a motion. We continue to... We keep the public hearing open, and we continue this item to December 13, Planning Commission.
Second.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, which I believe is old business. Is it old business? I lost... I am discombobulated tonight. Old business, which is, yeah, short-term rentals. So I'll just jump in real quick. We had a, what I would call, a very great, probably one of our best outreach meetings. I think the community mailer did a big... Had a lot of effect on getting more people in our community engaged and participating in the process. I was very pleased with the level of participation, the feedback that we got. I think it was exactly the type of feedback we were hoping for, you know, open, honest, clear. And look forward to the next step as we continue to move this forward. I don't know if you have anything else to add on short-term rentals, or Vice Chair Donner?
So the subcommittee is working hard now, digesting all of the public comments that we've been collecting. So with that, we're going to be bringing back potentially a framework of a program, potentially to the Planning Commission in January.
All right, great, thank you. All right, new business. I don't think we have any staff reports.
Nothing from you, thank you, but happy Thanksgiving.
Right, thank you. How about Commissioner comments? Starting on the end, you know, happy Thanksgiving as well, Vice Chair?
I'd just like to say thank you, and it was very nice to meet our newest commissioner. And I'm looking forward to a happy Thanksgiving vacation. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Donner. I'd also like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That will... I will close the meeting, and we'll adjourn next December 13, somewhere around 6:00 PM here in these chambers.